Start the meeting with a pledge.
I believe this is the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have the approval of the bills. Because the meeting last week got canceled, trustees came in and approved the bills at that time, so we'll have to do that tonight.
Uh, it just, once we're signed it, we're here.
Okay. Yeah, the reason we had to cancel last week, Emily was sick, Paul was sick, Michael was out of town, which he previously had arranged months before, and George was not yet appointed, so we didn't get a form. So we had to cancel the meeting, but Paul came in here and signed, Mike came in, and I had came in, so we were able to sign the bills at that time. Okay, okay, motion to approve the bills? Okay, we went on paper. Oh. Approval of the March ninth, twenty-two, twenty-two minute minutes in the April sixth meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to accept, all?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carry. Okay, we've got our reports of our officers. Any questions on anything from the mayor's report?
Yeah, was your digger cut back from Syracuse?
Well, it should be back tomorrow. We had to take our digger Derek into Syracuse for service recall. Courtney and I had to go to Syracuse for any MEUA, semi-UA annual, if I was able to drive the truck there and drop it off. Our guy, we're picking it up tomorrow. Worked out.
I didn't receive a report of the co-officer, so.
Any questions on the mayor's report?
Just give me one more second.
I am happy to see the DOT is gonna run an electric line up the traffic signal, because that's really a very dangerous spot when the power goes out in the village. And people don't know enough to make a four-way stop and always accidents there, so they've got now, or at least they could plug a portable generator in to keep that traffic signal going in the event of an hour, so I think it would save some lives.
No questions? Sure, is that something the DOT is gonna handle, bringing a generator out to that, or will?
Yeah, supposedly yes. I wish they would have put a automatic, you know, I'm sure Eric could tell how much those things cost to put a standby unit there, but it's better than nothing.
That's the right direction.
Yeah, years past, they've just come out with stop signs, you know, and put them there, and people are running through.
Yeah.
What a hazard. I'm happy to see them doing that. They're also doing a study here on this intersection here, Buffalo Street, Rochester Street, nineteen, because of the pulling outs, the visibility, so they're doing a study on that now to see if something could be changed there and make it safer. Waiting for their recommendations on that. You can see I've been busy with meetings, I've, I know I've just been in a short time, but I'm trying to catch up. Met with Patrick McGee, the superintendent at the high school, to go over the different activities that the students in the village are taking, and he has not sub date yet for the action day, but he should be, it should be forthcoming very soon. And we just touched base, and I assure them that everything that we've been doing, we're gonna continue to do with the kids, so. Staff meetings, you know, every week. Attended the county resiliency plan yesterday, Batavia at the GCD. And we're attending the GE renewable energy tomorrow at seven thousand five, the Apple Tree. Green energy there, and they're having an open house. I'll be attending that also. The Main Street grant was closed out, we got a letter closing that out, so that's, that's finished now. Mike Coquelin of La Bella touched base with me to follow up on that. Said he enjoyed working with the village and looks forward to working with us in the future, so. I got to work with him, you know, hands-on too, with the basements building, working with the Main Street grant, and he was great to work with. So I see us working together again in the future. The American Rescue Plan Act, that grant, we're still waiting for the architect drawings and recommendations for the park bathrooms. And that should be forthcoming. And the Tennessee Valley Rural Grant. I put in my many thanks to Anna McBarclay for submitting the grant application by the March thirty-first deadline. So we wait now in hopes of receiving the award. And again, me and Courtney attended the MEUA semi-annual conference in Syracuse, that's our electric association. And the front of the conference was green energy, our reci-, our renewable energy, and how our bills are gonna be going up with the renewable energy credits that were charged on our electric bill and the ZECs charges that were charged. So in the next couple of years, ours, they're saying our bills are gonna be going up, going to pay for the state mandates. And Courtney?
Uh, not too many updates or information from inside here. The person from Niagara who was going to come tomorrow to look around, came today. He lives all the way by Philadelphia, thought he wanted to get it done and get home. It was really just a reappraisal, that he went through all the buildings and substations and these stations just to get the value for insurance purposes. I talked about the fixed rate CCCs at the last meeting, but I mean, here it is on paper, it's a tremendous decrease in cost saving for us. Received a school sewer payment, which we ballparked at twenty-five, but it was twenty-three thousand, four forty-nine fifty paid. So we're trying to get that money. Right, we put three things out on auction. The RTB sold for nineteen thousand three hundred, and the MWR sold for fifteen thousand one hundred, which I was really surprised, especially for the MWR, that we got that much, I was thinking more like four or five thousand. But we picked his diesel engine, doesn't really sound after, so we got good money for that. The RTB has been also really good. Um, not so happy with the F-150, but I'm surprised, but that's what it is for adoption. It's, we only paid thirty-four in the first place in nineteen ninety, uh, nineteen, two thousand fifteen, so that's not bad. So that's really, just to kind of touch base with things. Had the state's plan, special, I don't know, the state's fiscal stress score. We got no designation. Got zero out of a hundred, which means it could have gone okay, maybe it was like, so zero is actually the best, hundred being the worst, and that, that is you know, hundred be the most stressed. Uh, they have a new environmental stress score, and we also received a few points for that, because of the decrease in population. But we got talks about unemployment and income rates and household violence and pollution and not in population. So we received, I think it's six point seven, and they're out of a hundred, so we're still.
Just one other thing, I'd like to let you all know, a big thanks to the Village of Churchill. We planned on cleaning our streets to get all the loose stone up that were on these streets, and we tried to rent a sweeper, and we couldn't get one until June, July, that's how booked up they were. So I gave Paul a call, and he put me in touch with the mayor of Churchill. And we talked, and at their board meeting, okay, sending their sweeper over here with their man to clean the streets for us. So I just want to say a big thank you to Village of Churchill.
He accepted it. Thanks, I was, I was sick that whole week, so I'll pass that on to the mayor.
Did a great job. Thanks, thanks to Village of Churchill for helping us out with that. Okay, could I have a motion to approve the officer's reports?
Motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carry. All right, George, you're ready. It's sworn in, Courtney, you're ready.
I'm ready.
At this time, we're gonna swear George started when, because it's Village trustee.
Pardon me? Uh, pardon me.
Pardon you, very good.
Say aye, state your name in full.
I, George Pearson Saradu.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will fulfill.
And that I will fulfill.
Just faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of trustee.
Of trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Sorry, I don't think so.
Sorry.
Now that George is sworn in, would you privilege on the floor? Privately, quickly to the floor?
Um, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, I don't think we've ever done this in the past, so I'm curious, because we have fledgling board members who have been involved before. Is there any kind of training for them or information packets that can be given to them so they can read up on on the village's policies, procedures, that type of thing, so that as they attend meetings, they'll have a little more knowledge as to what should be taking place? And I realize working brings knowledge with it too, but the fact, there, there's not that frame of reference for either of them. Um, I was just wondering again, if
That's an excellent point.
Something like that could be made available so they can study up and be prepared before they come to a meeting with what's going to be happening, you know, that evening, and maybe have a little more knowledge that way.
Well, Nikon supplies all that information. I know when I first came on, they had a webinar, I went on there. It was specifically for new board members.
I believe that's coming up, usually is a month or two after the elections.
Well, Nikon actually, when you update information with their system, they automatically mail out a starting cabinet, so.
Right.
So I gave both, one to Mike and George, so they can have the, um, the village officials handbook. Um, and I also ordered a series of webinars that you can download and they can include.
Okay.
And, Chris, I've thought about that so much over the years, because if you take the planning board, you know, how many hours a year do you guys have to have?
Uh, it's minimal, four.
Yeah, and To be on the planning board, zoning board, it's a minimal requirement of hours to take, but to be on the village board, you don't have any, you know, so I just always thought that, we go to Nikon fall training school and webinars and stuff, I just thought that'd be helpful for everybody, because there's so much.
Oh, my God. I think that was my first question when I came in as well. As I was stepped in, I asked Courtney, I need training, I need, I need information, I need to know what I'm doing, I need to know what's prepared. I, I don't like to, you know, sit down and be handed papers and then have to approve them, I won't look at them. So Courtney did give the book, and I've been going through it, and I know George will as well. I did spend a year on the planning board, so I do have a little bit of information and knowledge about how meetings work. But I will be doing webinars and, you know, getting as much information as I can to serve appropriately.
I did give them a copy of the comprehensive plan, the zoning law.
Yep, absolutely.
You know, I realize it's a timeframe where you absorb, it's too much absorb all at once, but you need some type of background to know, you know, what's being discussed and to make good sound judgments for the village.
Anyone else?
Yeah, a couple things. First, for Courtney, can you report on the electric, the fixed rate TTCs? Can you break that down a little bit? I mean, that seems like quite a big difference.
Yeah, so it went, so it went down a lot.
From sixty-five hundred to a hundred and eighty-eight?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, so it should probably be better explained.
These TCCs are transmission congestion charges.
Okay.
And we used to have congestion here in Western New York. They put a new line in from, in area in Niagara County, new transmission line. So all that congestion now is gone, because we've got more ways for them.
Right.
You know, the power to flow on the lines. So they've eliminated the congestion in Western New York with that new circuit. That's why there's, that's why they're that cheap, because they know the odds of us having any congestion now are really slim. Where in the past it was quite a bit, so that's, you know, up. If you go way up in the north country, they pay a lot for
Oh, sure.
TCCs. But because of that new line, transmission line being built, it's negated all the congestion, that's why they're really cheap now. There's still, it's a hedge, is what it is, like a little insurance policy.
Right, thank you. Uh, second thing is, I was wondering if you've spent any thought or consideration to posting way limit signs on Rochester Street?
Well, of course, yeah. So we, we did pass a law a while back for way limit on Rochester Street. But we were talking to DOT Dan Staley, and he says, I can't remember, because Anna talked to him about it, but I can't remember exactly the, but basically he said it would hold up in court, or we couldn't really
Really?
Whatever, so the right way to go about it is to change it and make it a local delivery only. So we have to make that change.
Okay.
So we will put those signs up.
Okay.
Down there.
Alright, thank you. Okay. Anything else?
Joe?
Yes.
What can be done about the speeders on Rochester Street?
Oh, I'm gonna contact the sheriffs to bring out their speed sign. I talked to the local, he lives here actually, and he said I could get ahold of the sergeant, and we're gonna get down here, post it, and I'm gonna talk to him about, we have to set up radar, we'll set up radar here, start catching people. And as soon as I think people see some lights going on here, and people get pulled over, it's gonna get their attention.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of young kids down at our end of Rochester Street, and the traffic is just flying by, and I'm concerned with, with summer vacation coming, they're
If you know the house where these kids live, give me a call, because the sheriff told me to contact them, and they'll actually go to the house and warn the kids and say, hey, we know what you're doing, we're gonna be on the lookout for you.
Right, and she referred to the kids playing in the yards.
In their front yards.
Cars going to the house.
And the cars are just flying by, you know, it's not unusual for the cars to be going forty, fifty miles an hour on Rochester Street. And there's kids that live across the street from each other, and they're playing back and forth across the street, and I'm really concerned somebody's gonna get hit.
If I may, I was passed, I was passed by a young man on Rochester Street, if you can believe that.
I believe it.
And what I did was, I didn't know where he was going or where he was, and I was gonna follow him, no matter where he went. I was gonna follow him. Well, he turned in on Rochester Street, he's a young guy about midway, and I read him the riot act. You know, so I think everybody needs to get involved with that, get a license plate. I don't know, I'm always young, I'm on thirty, I'm on thirty-three, and it's incredibly reckless the way he drives. And I'm out there with my hands up, and I yell at him, and, and
George lives up on Buffalo Road, you're probably doing sixty by his house.
And a thirty.
Well, I, I'm not too far from the corner there, they're heading towards thirty-three, but most of them are going fifty miles an hour when they go by my house.
So we contract the sheriff's department here, right? Do we have any control over the times of day that they come out, or is it random based on their schedules, or? Because I'm assuming it's during certain time periods, we could probably at least get an idea, you know, working hours or whatever. I don't really see him here a lot during working hours, I see him on weekends, but how does that work?
Yeah, we have a little bit of control, but mostly it's, the people who come, the officers come here as well on overtime.
Right.
So they're not regularly scheduled, so it's really
So we're paying them overtime?
That's right.
To come at their own hours?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. But do they give us a schedule, or do they tell us, do they let us know monthly, yearly?
They do, right, so yearly, at least yearly, they give us a bill and it's broken down in there, the one they came. You know, they have, they have multiple shifts, so, you know, it's not always, you know, one area, so they could drag, I have not seen that.
Well, Sunday at eight a.m. isn't, you know, ideal, you know, and that's when I typically see them around. You know, I do see them doing DWI's late at night and things like that, so that's good, but, you know, I, I, I live on Buffalo Street, so I get the same thing. They just pass my house and go to your house, so we'd like to see it too, you know, this would be neat to at least have a conversation with the sheriff's department about hours and how that works.
I would, I'm gonna do that. Believe it sounded like a challenge to do, to see if we can have a little more say when they are here. Because I, I thought years past, you could dictate when they were gonna be here, I thought, I thought the mayor knew exactly when they were gonna be here. Uh, that's, I, so how I thought it used to work, but I'll, the sergeant, I just got the number from Courtney, to go and contact him and adjust with the issues.
Is there plans for the speed bumps again this year?
It's just me, I see.
No?
No.
The trooper was parking on my property in Washington thirty-three, and he was nailing people here recently. Up until recently where he was promoted to detective. I was held by another trooper because I, I had some illegal dumping on my property, so the trooper came out. And this is when I found the trooper bill was promoted, and we had, he was coming regularly, that's a trooper. And he, and then once he was promoted to detective, then it just stopped, and I didn't know why. But that's why, because he was detective, he liked parking there, I got a little, made a little spot for him. You may have seen him parked there by the cemetery. And I don't know why nobody took over his station there, but I did mention last week that the trooper that I met this time said that if they write tickets and then they're thrown out in court, and I'm just repeating what the trooper said. They're gonna work for a village that prosecutes, not catch and release. So I don't know what the history of, do you remember me speaking of that?
Yeah.
So I don't know exactly what's going on with that, and he himself was giving people a break. You know, if they were, they lived on Munker Street, you nailed them, and so he wasn't being, you know, obnoxious.
So what about the speed bumps on Rochester Street? They did help in the past, and what they had speeding in that, that would certainly give them pause to have to stop.
You know, every street in the village?
No, Rochester Street we're talking about.
I know, but every street you got speeding on here.
I know, but right now, this is, this is a big concern for residents of Rochester Street.
On Rochester Street. I'm not gonna put speed bumps on Rochester Street.
Why not?
Because I'm against them.
You're against it for what reason?
I think it penalizes all the residents.
Yeah, if people aren't obeying the law, the speed on Rochester Street, it's not a problem for them with speed bumps. It's the people who are speeding and not obeying the law, and that has been a deterrent to some of them in the past.
If you go on the New York State Attorney General's website, look in the opinions, it is the opinion that the New York State Attorney General is not to put them out of municipal street.
We, we've, you know, we've been through this before in past meetings, so the fact remains that while the speed bumps were on Rochester Street, and we have residents here on Rochester Street, while the speed bumps were up, it did deter some of the speed.
And a risk to the village, huh?
No, no, it's not, it's not a risk. It's only a risk for the people who are not obeying the law, they are speed. And if they have to slow down for a speed bump, they are speeding. So how, so, you know, we've got, we've got here, I guess we're gonna have to agree to disagree, but if you aren't going to be working for the betterment of the people in the village, and these Rochester Street residents have a concern about that, and they know in the past that when the speed bumps were up, that it did help, you are telling them that their opinion is not of any value and that it's worth letting people speed through, and you have no, you have no other recourse to stop the speeding. Yes, you'll be contacting the sheriff and all that, but it's a minimal thing, they can't be there all the time. And Rochester Street is the main thoroughfare, and that's where you have to start concentrating. And if that works, fine, if it doesn't, then you go to something else.
I didn't speed down Rochester Street with those speed bumps, I had to stop to go over, it ruined my shot.
Exactly.
I didn't really appreciate it, so I went down Munker Street.
Even the police officer told me, his personal car, he didn't like going over. He goes, I, he goes, man, he goes, I don't, I don't drive over, they ruined my car. What's that?
Weren't they vandalized?
Somebody ripped them off.
They're lost.
You couldn't go over them at, at two miles an hour allowed, jar in your car. There, and I was worried about motorcycles waving out at them.
And go up into Rochester Street left, and then make a crowd. So I guess it depends on your manner of driving and how it works. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, trustee concerns, Paul, you're in there?
No, I don't.
Not at this time.
I do have one, because I got attacked at the Legion by Tommy Williamson. Uh, he says that he's upset that they're parking here on the side, that the village drugs.
I told him at the last meeting, that's parked there.
Oh, okay.
Last meeting.
Then I will, I will pass that on. It was funny, because I says, you know, I'm not, I'm not businessier, but, but I just thought I'd say that, because, you know, it was brought up to me, and he was quite mad, that he has to, you know, an elderly person has to park in the back there, and while these young bucks are, you know, parking right there, and that, you know, I have very little opinion, other than the fact that, you know, older people should be able to get closer, you know.
At the first staff meeting, I brought it up, and I haven't seen a At the first staff meeting I brought it up and I haven't seen a truck park there since.
That's great, I'll tell, I'll tell Tommy that you took care of them.
Okay, yeah. Okay, let's go onto the uh, New York document. Y'all had a chance to look at it, we sent this Tuesday to everybody. We did, we did fill the position of uh, village historian, Vicky Truax. He's gonna be filling that position. Glad to get someone in the, as an historian. It's been a couple of years since Ray, you know, Ray passed away. Ray did a great job. So it's good to have someone in there.
Besides the appointments, the only thing that uh, in terms of like change was the mileage. And then went to fifty-eight cents. The IRS says five, fifty-eight, uh, pumps five cents, but I don't like five anything, so I just cut the pump five on after fifty-eight cents. Um, nobody, I don't know the last time someone did that, but uh, it's almost gonna be.
Are you gonna continue to have a park committee?
Yes, Vicky. For sure, and uh, the tree cell, and the tree also.
Okay.
Any other questions on the New York document? No further discussion, now, maintain a motion for accept. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Next gonna be business is our draft, the county land use agreement. This should make things a little easier for the zoning. The purpose is the intent of this agreement to eliminate the need for county review of certain actions as defined here which do not have significant inter-community or countywide impacts. The agreement between the Tennessee County Plane Board and the Village of Virgin Board shall be identical to that between the county and any other municipality. They're trying to streamline some of the uh items that are, have really insignificant uh, impact. That we can handle it all with, you know, in the village itself, rather than send everything off to the county for similar issues. Todd, I would think you would see this as a good thing.
Absolutely, it's gonna definitely reduce the wait time for people that wanna get things rolling. Like you mentioned, insignificant things don't need to go to the county and be delayed another month waiting for their meeting when we can handle it right here.
Do you have any discussion? Motion to adopt this draft? Motion?
Okay.
Okay, motion being second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You wanna go with the?
Sure.
Beef budget?
So the Virgin Energy Efficiency Program, um, it's uh, in the past year. Um, so officially, um, it's not something we uh, have to do, but I think something we should do is have a budget. I'm really happy with the, the way this has ran over the number of years. Having an in-house, we're able to be more flexible with the resident and uh, give rebates. Where we used to be part of the IEP, um, that is a little more strict. We tailored this to what our needs are. And really, there's not been too much change. Uh, usage is about the same, um, this year, um, it hasn't used quite as much, so. Um, we're gonna buy light bulbs again, um, so those are gonna be ordered soon, uh, and we'll deliver them again. So there's, we're buying packs of four. And we'll put those in the bag with information on the, on the, get them around to people. I'm also gonna go in, buy probably a dozen of our old thermostats. And then offer them to people in the village, um, free, if they want them. If we run out and they, there's a good demand, then I'll get some more. So we're starting to, this, because this year's a little, a little down, I'll buy those days and hopefully we can, we can get more money back to the uh, residents. Uh, so generally we take in about thirty-three thousand dollars um, a year from, so this, just so you know, this program is mandatory by the state, public service commission. And so we have to have a program. Um, everybody else outside of communities, uh, myself, the environment, um, our electric bill has, uh, so the money from, I get, goes NYSERD. That's, all the NYSERD programs are funded just like this, so. This is our program, um. Yeah, appliance rebate, I kept a saying that uh, usually is pretty steady. Refrigerator pickup, um, so we give everybody seventy-five dollars if, instead of putting their uh, old refrigerator out in the garage to suck up electricity, to uh, get rid of it. So that's that, so usually any, many times we find a new one, if we uh, now pick up the old one. There was a door rebate, um, done a little bit on that. Light bulbs remain that same. Commercial lighting wasn't used quite as much as it was previously, so we dropped that one by a thousand. I don't know if Liberty Pump's gonna ask for any money from us, um, the project's so big that, uh, I think we can get them as early, uh, helpful. The furnace rebate, that one is we're seeing more, uh, could they use it? There's, there's uh, heat pumps and other things like that that are coming around that people are using and trying to keep them efficient. So I increased that. Home insulation is something I'd like to work on. Um, if, this program, uh, if you, if you put money, if you do the insulation in your attic, it gives, it gives a percentage of the cost of that up to, um, up to fifty, uh, it's fifty percent up to, I think, a thousand dollars, but. But I also like to contact some of the people who are higher, higher unit electric users, who may need their attic insulated. And when we can work with them and help them out that way. There was a program like that years ago, um, that through the IEP, which the program itself wasn't really that great, but the result of, you know, people in the village getting their attics insulated for free was, you know, great for that.
And Courtney, is that just specifically for attic insulation, does that maybe, you are getting blown insulation in their walls now, does that all suit with that or?
Right, so, and, and insulation, the walls in the attic.
Courtney, is it electric heat?
Uh, we haven't been doing electric heat only, um, just trying to, you know, distribute the money back to the people and, and uh, just keep it efficient. Electric givler, um, we haven't had anybody use that one, but with more and more, um, push through electric vehicles, I feel just leave that one there. Commercial windows, I dropped that, you know, a lot of the, the downtown, it's already been spruced up and it's great, so I can't imagine us we treat anymore. Uh, hopefully, um, the partners or something will take it, but that's. And uh, portable thermostats, um, except for, gonna buy some of those, but uh, that's not huge demand. I just, Sue, I always, I always reference this, is that, um, it doesn't, the, the, the beep, we don't, the, the village doesn't charge beep for any time of our time, within the office, you know.
Administration.
Administration fees. Back when we had IEP, um, it was a minimum of twelve percent that they took off the top of anything that we did. And then there was a high, uh, uh, engineering fee. So it cost us, cost us quite a bit, so, um, you know, I'm just happy that, um, we have it set down such a science, um, that it's really, really seamless. Program's looking good. In the past years, it's really kind of broken almost even every single year, so it's, uh, that's the, the goal is to, um, give out what we take, which I can.
When you hear a beep, it stands for Virgin Energy Efficiency Program, just so you know.
Are all these rebates funded on our website?
Yep, and read out here and then uh, we can first walk in and all the, the, the refund's right there.
I know some of the other municipalities are buying uh, solar powered radar over the streets. Is that something we've never considered, willing funds if, if they are left over, maybe we don't spend them all on industrial lighting, windows or whatever. Is that something we've never considered?
Looking at that. I'm not gonna put speed things on the, can I go slow you down when you're coming in?
Yeah, I always check my speedometer when I'm coming out of that.
Yeah.
Certainly wouldn't be opposed to more of those.
Mm-hmm.
Are those hardwired in, choke, going by the mark?
Those are.
These two are, but they do make solar out, just well. They're not as easily moved, but they still are considered affordable. Something to think about, uh, moving forward.
Okay.
Forty-five hundred dollars for a pair of them, which isn't terrible compared to what the uh, hundred ten volt ones are.
Okay, I know the IEP used to fund them.
Yeah.
Their programs though.
They give you the information, so they, you could see what time of day your speeder is going through there, how fast they're going.
Okay.
And then you could pass that along to the sheriff and say, hey, here's our tire guard window. Um, you can, basically if you've got the app and the password, you can walk up to it with a cell phone and it'll give you all that. I think it was, like I said, was approved by the IEP, which we're not a member of.
We follow the same.
But yeah, you follow their protocol and, and they certainly do all the research if, if it's an acceptable expense, so.
Okay, and Courtney said, uh, we're purchasing the light bulbs with four, four per household, I believe, so we go around house to house giving those out. Just trying to make all the residents more aware of, of the beep program. I'm amazed how many people I've talked to and they're putting new windows in a house, you know, and they don't even realize that they can get a, a rebate back. You know, I tell them, they're always glad to hear that they can come in here and get a rebate, so. The more, uh, we promote it, the better.
That would be just as well.
Yes, well, it's anyone in our care, our franchise area. So we go out to the Rodney Gun Club and we go to Kaiser Wilcox out on nineteen. They're all Virgin Electric.
So anybody would be, anybody would be provided back for too.
Yeah. All right, Eric, you're welcome.
Thanks for being with us here tonight.
Oh, my pleasure, my pleasure. So I think you all have copies of a recommendation letter and a summary of the budget. So, uh, we did open bids for really the next two major components related to the wastewater upgrades. Um, that being, uh, the work related to upgrading our existing pump stations. So Rochester Street pump station, which has already been, uh, somewhat upgraded, pumps have been replaced, controls have been, uh, uh, been replaced, but so as far as what's left over in this project, it's really dealing with the existing piping, building, uh, getting the, those components operational, also removing the, the chain link fence around it, so. Really kind of consider that kind of an eyesore, uh, everything is lockable, secured, so all the electrical panels, the vaults, so.
Will those pipes, the black iron pipes, be gone or are they still gonna be sticking out?
You still have to have, you still have to have the gooseneck for the ventilation aspect, but.
I just worry about the lawn, will they mold the lawns around there?
Well, you still have, you'll still have the gravel around it, but you just won't have the, the chain link fence with hardware, so. Um, Gibson pump station is the more major upgrade, uh, that, as the main lift station, it really takes ninety-five percent of the flow from the village. Uh, that really hasn't been touched really since it was installed in the eighties. So that's essentially, with the exception of the wet wells and the vault itself, all the pumps, piping, electric components will be replaced. In addition, that will receive a permanent standby generator on site with a natural gas feed, so. Uh, the last pump station is the one over Apple Tree, uh, that's relatively new, uh, really just gonna recap some of the components, um, again, some of the building, piping, some pump upgrades, but for the most part, they'll maintain that little, that little green calf at, at the corner. Uh, the other components of the bids that were opened, uh, specifically Contract A was related to the installation of a fine screen at the wastewater plant. So, uh, that was a component that was there with the original project and Joe and I, you and I talked about it. Uh, former DPW supervisor elected to pull it out, um, and kind of go with a manual system, really hasn't worked the way the operator had, uh, envisioned down there, so ultimately we're gonna put a screen back in. Uh, the big change though, it's not gonna go back where it originally had it, we're gonna move that out into the pre-eration tank building, where the, the pole barn structure is. Uh, main reason being, the one, one of the big complaints where it was before was just the orders that would get into the, into lab and the, and the admin area of the building, so. It was gonna be relocated out there. The bids for the, for that contract, so that's Contract A, was the pump station, the fine screen, uh, came in at four hundred, three, four hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. Uh, low bidder was STC Construction, uh, they were the company that originally did, uh, the wastewater plant upgrades back approximately fifteen years ago. They're a, I would say, one of the major water, wastewater contractors in the area as far as, far as planning on some process. So we've done work recently with Eminacron, um, and uh, Lakeville Wastewater facility down in Longoria and I've also done some recent work with Town of Tavia on their pump station, so. Very qualified, uh, actually one of the contractors we had, we had hoped would be low on the project. Uh, there was also three additional bids for that project and those ranged from six hundred and forty-three thousand. Uh, there was also three additional bids for that project, and those ranged, uh, from six hundred forty-three thousand to just under seven hundred eighty thousand dollars. But, uh, uh, we did have a conversation with STC, they're comfortable with their number even though they were that much lower. Um, they're very comfortable with the price, so no concerns from their end. Based on, like I said, their, their experience, their work ethic, uh, we would definitely recommend them. Uh, Contract B is the installation of the UV system. Uh, so, uh, basically every wastewater plant, uh, throughout New York State is being required to put a ultraviolet inspection system in, uh, basically, uh, any, any plant that discharges to a waterway that could be used somehow for recreation. Um, and recreation can multiple categories, can just be a kid out there getting, you know, getting crawfish out of the, out of the stream or, or kayaking down Black Creek, so. Uh, we did fight it for a number of years, um, unfortunately, they ended up kind of forcing it on us. Thankfully, we did, were able to obtain a grant to pay for it for a while, so. Uh, bids for the UV piece was a hundred twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars. Um, there were four other bids for that piece, uh, ranging between a hundred sixty-four thousand and a hundred eighty-four thousand seven hundred. So, before I go into our recommendation, I wanna, wanna kind of go over the, uh, budget sheet with you, okay? So you can see a snapshot of where we are today. Uh, there's three columns on here, uh, one is the original, one would, I'll go over, I'll go over all these. One was the original, one was proposed, and one is where we are today. So the original is what we submitted to, uh, New York State Department of Facilities Corporation. I think it was three years ago now. Um, originally, that included, uh, the membrane work, replacing membranes, upgrades of the pump station, and some upgrades to some of the manhole structures, uh, that we have in the village related to IEP. With the soft costs, that totaled one million twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, uh, there's a grant component, so two hundred fifty-six thousand, two hundred fifty dollars, resulting in a local share, um, that thankfully, we did obtain hardship financing, uh, which is essentially, in my opinion, a grant, and so it's represented in sort of thirty years, it's huge. Um, so the annual payment, uh, was projected to be twenty-five thousand, uh, six hundred twenty-five dollars. Um, probably over the past year, we've had a talk about, you know, adding in the fine screen, um, obviously, the, 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 the mandate from the DEC of the UV, and then there was discussion of adding in or replacing the, the PLC on this wastewater plant. Um, and that will be not just a single PLC like it is now, but, uh, duplication, so if that PLC ever fails, uh, there's a, there's a backup system. So, so those components were kind of modified, uh, so, so the proposed budget is kind of what was talked about. Uh, with the previous mayor, I think it was probably four months ago, this was kind of proposed to the board at that time, where we plugged in the actual cost of what the membranes were, uh, kind of what our revised numbers were for the pump station work. And at the time, we kind of projected we'd go from one million twenty-five thousand dollars to, uh, one million two hundred fifty-four thousand and change. Um, we did have a discussion with the funding agency about that change, uh, they were more than open to, um, modifying the funding to increase the loan amount to cover the difference. Uh, but what they did encourage us to do was get the bids opened, uh, 'cause what they've been seeing a lot lately is the numbers are just all over the place just because of the supply chain issues. Um, so, uh, they, they encouraged us to get the bids open, so that's kind of, if you're reflecting on the actual column here, uh, this, this plugs in actual numbers for everything with the exception of the manholes. Um, but what I feel on manholes is that's really our, that's real our ceiling, we do as many as we can with a hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. And, you know, if we find any more later on, we can, we'll figure out how to deal with them, but. So, so in summary, uh, what we're proposing is total estimated project cost, one million two hundred thousand dollars. Um, increases our annual projected payment from twenty-five thousand six twenty-five to twenty-eight thousand two, two thirteen over thirty years, so. Um, so that's kind of the, and it, it does allow us, does give a little bit of contingency, so, uh, we did build in a little bit of contingency dollars, so thirty-five thousand. So everything goes right with the projects we just bid. Ideally, we'd have roughly two hundred thousand dollars if we could get these manholes, so. Um, and on the manholes, I know, uh, Chris and Courtney went around about two months ago now, um, did a little preliminary investigation of some areas. And I know, talked to the maker about this, um, there's a couple actually right in, right in the yard. Um, when that creek goes up during the spring floodhaw, um, there was, we estimate at least five gallons a minute in each of those two manholes, which equates to about fifteen thousand gallons a day. So significant amount of flow. So the hope is that, you know, those are, those what we call our smoking guns, you find the ones that, you know, kind of easy fruit, you can low hang it through, we can, we can address them. But, you know, we need to, we need to spend some more time on the manholes, you know, we're due evaluations that were completed a few years ago, but also spend some more time with Chris.
What does it fix on those raised elevations or?
And it's, so unfortunately, um, it's actually not coming in the top.
Okay.
It's coming in, in the seam somewhere, it's a little.
Hydraulics in there or something?
Well, it's, it's gonna be an interesting evaluation, 'cause those are precast manholes, and then I don't know when, when the, the, there was PVC plastic inver, inver, inserts installed in.
Oh, those liners already in?
At some point.
Okay.
So it's tough to say without taking inserts out to really identify, but my gut sense is, you know, gr, drilling and drilling behind the manhole structure to really see it from behind, but, um, I think, you know, until we can spend a little more time evaluating, you know, probably gonna have to drill a few holes in those plastic inserts so the camera can see what's behind there. Um, but I think if we can tackle a lot of those items, that'll, that'll help with some of the, some of the problems we have, uh, that'll play out, so.
Eric, how many gallons per day does a average house use?
Average house, you're, normal dry weather, you're a hundred eighty gallons a day.
Hundred eighty?
Yeah.
Just true, that's, the infiltration's big then.
Yeah. Hundred eighty gallons a day. It's our normal water usage.
Okay, thank you.
And that, that's actually down considerably from, I would even say fifteen years ago, you know, the number we used to use was two fifty. But reality is all these water saving fixtures, people are putting every time we replace a toilet, every time you replace a shower head fixture, they all have components in them. They really have, uh, done a job at reducing the consumption, so. So, couple things for tonight, um, first is, um, really don't get a formal approval, um, kind of where we're going with the budget. Um, ultimately, what I really kind of look forward is, you know, does this seem reasonable to you as far as the approach? That will kind of allow us to go back to the EFC. What we have to submit to them is a single page project modification form that will kind of update this, this paperwork on. Uh, we have to update the engineer report, get that to them with the updated budget. Then they essentially just, it's really just a paperwork process for them. Uh, but we'd like to get that process rolling with them to get this, uh, overall project budget increased to one point two million. Uh, the other component would be, um, looking for a, a motion from the board to award the contracts for STC Construction. Um, so Contract A in the amount of four hundred thirty-four thousand eight hundred dollars, and Contract B, uh, in the amount of a hundred twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars, contingent upon approval from the New York State Department of Facilities Corporation. So that way, um, kind of get your, get your blessing on the contracts, but still gives the funding agency the, the opportunity to review and approve. So really, it's definitely a board action on the recommendation, uh, for the contract award, and then I guess kind of just, does, does the proposed budget seem reasonable to you and should we proceed, you know, going down the next step with the funding agency?
Any idea what the timeframe is?
As far as.
Once it's awarded?
So once it's awarded, um, we would reach back out to the contractor, provide them with the notice of award form. Normally takes three weeks or so to get the agreements and bonds back, uh, from the contractor, at which point we can get the agreements signed by yourself. Um, so it all, that's about a month period. Uh, then they would start with the submittal process, so they'd reach out to their suppliers, uh, get submittals, purchase order completed. Submittals typically come back to them in about a month. Um, at which point, as we review those with Chris, to make sure all the equipment selections are appropriate. The equipment right now, um, some of this stuff, the, some of the piping, um, is gonna be nine months out. So it just, ductile piping right now is ridiculously times. Um, hopefully, I hope, hope is though the STC, they're, they're a reputable firm, they may have some of this stuff available on their shelves. Uh, the UV equipment, uh, we've kind of heard it's a six month timeframe for those components. Generators, we're being told, four months right now. So, kind of all over the place, um, and contractors are telling us horror stories where, like these companies aren't even telling them any idea when they're gonna get it, they just sign it and we'll keep you posted.
Can we lock in on pricing?
We lock in on pricing with the contractor, yes. Yep. So their, their contract is what some.
We delay, we risk price increases.
As far as the award tonight.
Yeah.
Um, so we technically, technically have forty-five days from bid opening, uh, to award the contract. Um, you know, past that, it's really a discussion with the contractor that, hey, you will know under bid price.
Right.
Um, haven't had that discussion with them, but, but that's where they would have the opportunity to. If you just say, yeah, we're uncomfortable, and then, then the risk is, um, you know, you really can't negotiate that price back with them. So you're really going back on the bid, uh, and, you know, relax with.
Yeah, and they've seen the numbers, so they may say, hey, you're a little low on the last one. Absolutely, you don't want to do that.
Yeah.
Seems unpointed to me, seems appropriate.
Yeah.
I'd rather lock in.
All right. Is there a motion to, uh, accept Contract A? Four hundred thirty-four thousand, right Eric?
Yep, four hundred thirty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. And Contract B, one hundred twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars to STC Construction.
STC Construction.
Contingent upon approval from the New York State Department of Facilities Corporation.
Right.
I'll, I'll make a motion for A and B. Second, for B.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
And then as far as the budget modifications, does this seem reasonable to you, how we kind of propose the, the actual name?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so nothing, nothing final tonight, we'll work with the pump facility corporation.
I like the built-in, um, people on the I and I work.
Yep.
Uh, with any remaining savings that we may have.
Yep. Yep.
All systems have them.
Yes, it does.
And, uh, yeah, I think we just can tackle.
Okay. So.
It's gonna be so important to develop different property.
Yep, yeah, like, like I told you on the phone, just those two manholes equates to seventy-five.
This is where our terror sewer plant as well.
It's fifteen thousand gallons a day.
Processing groundwater.
Yep.
Eric, I'd like to comment about the refinancing, they were talking about combining the two projects.
Yes. So right now, it's technically listed as the UV project listed separately with them, and the, the other stuff's listed separately. But right now, we're just gonna, the proposal is, let's combine them, have one long, just move forward.
One long would be good.
Yep.
Okay.
Last thing I have, if I can just hit your, John Hancock, you're mayor. So these are the notice of award forms that will send to the contractor and the funding agency needs, one for Contract A, one for Contract B. And then this form is required by the funding agency. It's basically our certification, uh, that we follow, you know, state requirements on the, uh, design of the, of the improvements, but it requires your signature date. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Any other things for me tonight, while I'm here? Good?
I think so. Next on the agenda is, we, uh, have a couple of pieces of surplus equipment that we'd like to send out to auction, not big items. One's a jackhammer. It's been here since, probably two thousand and five, back then we bought out a bunch of our contractors' electrical supplies and it was in with, with a lot of, uh, stuff we bought. We haven't hardly used it at all. Figured we'd turn it in, send it to auction, see if we can get for it, 'cause it's just sitting in our shop doing nothing all these years. And the other thing is a, uh, aluminum truck ladder. When we bought our squirt pool, it came with the truck. And, uh, it's just an aluminum rack that's mounted on the top of the truck and, you know, slide an extension ladder on it. Uh, it's not being used at all. So we have auctions international that we can take these kind of items to, and they don't charge us any commission at all, which is great, 'cause we're municipal. So we've had great luck, uh, bringing all our vehicles there and, uh, we can bring these items there and, uh, see what they bring rather than just tend to take it up space. So with that, I need a motion to be able to call these surplus and take them in.
I think I'm on the debate, you tried to make this motion. Make a motion.
First ahead.
Motion made, second, and all who's in favor?
Aye.
Carry. Last thing on the agenda is the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budgets. Two changes that have been made since the last time. One is to the election item. Because there, there will be an election in this fiscal budget. There's been four hundred dollars put into the personnel side of, of that line item, and then one hundred dollars for the contractual, which is used to, uh, basically feed the inspectors when they're there. The other, the Sage Building, uh, the revenue, uh, we raised it, uh, I hear someone, we raised it, uh, from sixty-five hundred to nine thousand dollars, because the, the amount of rentals now is going up on the, on the Sage Pavilion. So every time we rent, we get more revenue, so we've increased the revenue side of the line item to reflect that.
Yeah, so far this year, we have, um, forty-five reservations. And so, and that's, uh, just so far, uh, November, December, uh, didn't really booked up yet, and they will be, that's one time, so. So, uh, we changed the ring structure, uh, April first, uh, to two hundred dollars for residents, two fifty for, um, town residents, and then, uh, three hundred thirty dollars. And, um, so if you go, if you look at the, the two hundred, the, the minimal, two hundred times forty-five, that's nine thousand, so. Uh, that's fairly conservative, I think, for everyone.
I would urge the trustees to look at this, uh, summary ledger, got all the accounts on it. Yeah, and it shows the, shows, you know, what was budgeted, where we actually are, the variances, so you can kind of get an idea of the different line items. How the budget works. Well, those were the two changes that were made to the budget. Our budget vote, it's been advertised, is on the, uh, twenty-seventh. At six thirty, so. so. Any questions on, what are you doing? I know you're, it's new to you, George, it's gonna take a while, huh?
Otherwise, I'm asking.
Well, you probably deal with budgets, huh?
I do. I do.
That's good. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to both.
I will make that motion.
Motion made, seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for coming, everyone.